Calling to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for August 21st, 2018. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Fritsch, here. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Okay, correction and approval of the City Council minutes of August 7th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
It's removed.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. You can decide. Whoever you think you heard. Okay. And any corrections or any comments on the minutes, please?
Aye.
So, okay, then call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Upstein.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, correspondence. Anyone wish to share correspondence that you've received since our last meeting?
I've received a couple of phone calls, a couple of emails, and some, just one-on-one out in the community talking about the Rock Lake Activity Center.
I received one such phone call, too. You're okay?
I'm okay.
Hi, I'm okay. Okay, no other correspondence? Questions and public comment? The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting had been called to order. The state open meeting law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments. Please fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. If anyone wishes to address the council, you can do so by going up to the podium at this time.
Good evening, I'm Wendy Burns, and I'm at N 6536 Sherwood Hills Road here in Lake Mills. And I just wanted to be able to do a shout-out for the Rock Lake Activity Center and hopeful that there's some opportunity where we can come together as a community to be able to support it. It's a really important facility for this city, to be able to bring together all age groups. We've got dance for the children, we've got gymnastics, we've got all sorts of science activities for those preschoolers, and fitness centers for all of us who need that regular activity and such. And pickleball, there's all sorts of opportunities there. And the physical plant is in great need of being able to be updated, but over time, being able to bring together the variety of groups that are working towards, you know, bringing this center about and such, so we really look forward to the City Council being able to, you know, look into it and support it.
Oops. Oh, you need a pen over there. Forgot to check that before the meeting. All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time?
Good evening, my name is Mike Clark. I live in Waterloo, but I spend about 90 percent of my time in Lake Mills. I'm the volunteer coordinator for pickleball at the Arlac Center. We started out about two years ago with four people, we now have 30 people. We've outgrown the single gym that we have at Arlac, and we now use the middle school gym, we also use the tennis courts, and we've now just recently moved to the Rotary Park. We are growing. The sport of pickleball is growing, it's huge. It's for all ages, all genders. The benefits of pickleball, that's just one activity at Arlac, we were talking about others. If you go to an ARC website and Google pickleball, they've done studies of the benefits of pickleball to all ages of all people. And I encourage you to think about that when you're thinking about the activity centers. The benefits are tremendous. So anything you can do to keep this going and improve on it will help Lake Mills and the whole neighborhood, for that matter. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Andy Tonies. My wife, Rhiannon, is here, and our children, Ella, Ben, and Julia. We live at 148 East Washington Street, right here in Lake Mills. We have only lived in Lake Mills for two years. We came here specifically because we heard how family-friendly of a community it is, and we feel very lucky to have spent the last two years of our lives here and look forward to many more. We definitely support any funding that could go towards the Rock Lake Community Center or Activity Center. We are there multiple times a week, if not a day. Our children participate in really family-friendly enrichment activities for the kids that are very affordable. We're not wealthy people. We get by on one salary, and the center provides really great opportunities for our kids to explore different things that they would not have the opportunity to explore at other facilities because of the expense. And I appreciate you listening to me this evening and for everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Anderson, I live at 277 Oakbrook. Like the previous gentleman, I am a relatively new transplant to Lake Mills, I've been here two years. I run my own business out of my home, I'm a solo practitioner, and until recently, I really haven't taken advantage of all that Lake Mills has to offer. I've been driving back and forth to Milwaukee and Madison, and just last week or the week before, I swung by Rock Lake for the first time at the Activity Center and signed up. And I have my first personal training session, this is last week. I have kids on the weekends, and I'm excited to be able to bring them there, and I just think it's a really cool, family-friendly, warm place to be. So, like the previous folks who've commented, if the city sees itself clear to provide the funding that's requested and needed, it would be a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? There probably won't be a time to speak later in the agenda unless you are staff and we vote to open it to staff, but, so if you have comments, now is the time.
Good evening, my name is Susan Maloney, and I'm the director at the activity, and I just wanted to address one concern that some of you had at the last meeting about potentially losing the money that you put forth to help us out with this compliance loan that we are applying for, and just, I can't predict the future, but I can only tell you that as director, we are now capable of paying our bills and meeting payroll each month, so I can only assume that with a safer, more appealing building, we're only going to grow in programs and membership, and the idea that we would close or fold is probably not, not a very strong likelihood. Thank you.
Oh, would you sign the sheet? Thank you. Anyone else? I think some of our young people want to speak, but we just won't let them, you know?
She wants to get up and dance.
Dance, that's, that's a good idea. We're really behind the arts here. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rhiannon Tonies, I live at 148 East Washington Street. Just reiterating what all those that before we spoke, and especially what Susan's saying about the funding, this community is behind the Rock Lake Activity Center. If you've ever been to one of their fundraisers, you would see how many community organizations and businesses donate to help them succeed. The last fundraiser this spring packed the house, and it did really, really well, so it definitely is a place that has community support. As my husband said, two years ago when we moved here, the community center is where we made our first friends, it's where our kids got involved with activities. She was utilizing it even before she was born in the Bumta Baby Yoga class, so it's an invaluable asset to our community, and I really hope that you vote in support of it. See if I can get my name signed on the sheet.
Wait till she really can get around and say things. Maybe we have a future councilperson there.
And I mean, these three are proof of just a few of the people that really don't give them the service.
Anyone else like to speak on any topic, not just this one, but anything that's on our agenda? That you're welcome to do so. Seeing none, I will close the questions and public comment and move on to the City Manager's report at this time. Okay, Steve?
You were provided on your digital agenda, the general check fund, or the general fund checks, the July budget report, and the July capital budget report, and the PD monthly report. I wanted to let you know that we're still working on the composting, it was at the Public Works Board. We're checking in some signage and some things for the existing one, and I think we've kind of headed in a direction on how we want to handle composting. I noticed that on South Main Street, the gas company has come back and started working again.
Oh, that's good news.
Way down on the south side, they've been pulling some big blinds. I don't know that everybody's that happy about it. Mulberry Street has started, you'll notice some poles going up and some holes being dug. Street maintenance contracts, so let's talk about rain.
Well, we didn't get the 11 inches last night.
No, thank goodness.
Yay!
I did go out at midnight to do some inspections, and it was, it was pretty good. Everybody's behind.
Yeah.
So projects that we anticipated having starting on August 1st haven't started yet and may not start until after September 1st, which means they're probably going to get into school, so you're going to see streets and oil and ship, and several other types of projects being completed that may make getting around the city difficult, so please be patient, let people know that there are other options.
Well, it isn't like we're not trying, it's just that we have our hands tied when the weather doesn't cooperate.
That's correct. Crestview subdivision has completed their work, I think the only thing that's left is some electric on our part. There's a nice rock shelf back there, and it's a little bit difficult digging through that, so it may take us a while. Tid number seven is going to be on the Plan Commission agenda next week. You may want to watch that, see what happens. We've already had our first Joint Review Board meeting, and tonight you have an annexation that's related to that subdivision, or that tid. We went through our July 31st lead service lateral postings. Of course, we didn't meet the requirement of the DNR on that date. The DNR said that they would meet in a couple weeks or not and let us know what they were going to do, so. Some people around here are really optimistic, some people are really pessimistic.
Well, we like to have well-rounded staff.
Right.
So, a little from both is good.
We have already started our radium testing, and we've got our first round done, we'll probably have a second level done, and then we're going to wait for some more reporting time and see if we need a third round. AMI is continuing to move forward, they're slowly getting more of those meters in, not as fast as we'd like, but the WPPI is still having some difficulty with transferring the data. We encourage everybody to, in a commercial business, including a multifamily, to check their cross-connections and file their report with the city, because you are going to get another letter shortly telling you that you're running out of time. Corrosion control, we've started harvesting our lead pipe, and we have started to manufacture our testing device, and we have approval on our proposal from the DNR, so I think we should be moving forward quite well with that. Water rate adjustment is before the Public Service Commission, it looks like it will not go into effect until around January 1st. We received a proposal to merge with the Jefferson Fire Department, and I'm looking into that proposal, probably start working on it in September. A couple issues I want to clean up before that date. EOC, Emergency Operations Center. Fortunately with the flood, we didn't have to have any. The only call I got was from one of the highest places in the city, that's a drainage problem, not a flood problem. A flood problem's when you're next to the lake, or the creek, or the drainage ditch, and it starts to rise up. Generally, in that type of storm that we had, it comes and goes so fast that actually responding with bagging is not probably a very viable operation, but we are going to start looking at what it is, that we want to be able to declare as policies. I think the last time we actually bought sandbags was around 2008, so we're investigating how we did there, if we have any good sandbags yet, they usually last about five years if I remember correctly. The next ICS class, we recently had one on the 15th and the 16th, we had ICS 300, which Steve Fields, Dan and I, and Betsy attended, along with a large number of other staff and some people from other communities in the EMS. And we are looking at moving to the 400, probably relatively soon, and trying to keep it where it's just city staff and maybe the EMS, no people from outside the city. We also need to make sure we have the 800, I guess that's a new one that everyone has to have before they can go to the 400, so.
Can you define what you mean by 400, 800?
400 is a class that helps you understand how to implement an emergency operations center in conjunction with a incident command base. And it's about the coordination and understanding who the incident commander is, who is actually, you know, what the emergency operations center type of work is versus what the base's work is, and how to coordinate all those activities. Generally, our type of activity would be related to a flood, or a tornado, or a windstorm, so I think we're trying to look at some type of event like that. We'll probably also continue to have another one sometime in January, February, which will continue to move us up the ladder into being able to perform adequately.
Would that kind of command center be a hall, well, let's assume, I know this hasn't happened, but in a medical emergency or something like that, would that also play a role?
Well, there are two types of activity centers here. One of them is called an event, and the other one's called an incident. So any type of event that we hold in the city, we could run an EOC practice or setup on. So anytime we get that event application, we can go through it, sit down, and then we can plan as an EOC how to handle that event. An incident is something like a flash flood, or a tornado, or a hurricane. It's not something that you get to sit down and say, these are the people who you were going to have. Generally, you want to have a concept of how you're going to attack it, but then you really are in emergency operation mode of being able to find people, get things set up, get the resources and that type of thing. So they're different, but yes, a medical emergency, depending on how it's qualified, could fall in one of those categories.
Let's say opioids or something like that.
You really need something that's a little bit more than one or two incident. Generally, you could have, yeah, Steve?
Ideal one for that would be, say if there was a school bus crash, where you had 30 kids that were injured, this would be something where you'd set up more of a structure on how to categorize transport, how to help.
Triage.
On a triage, on a ma, on a large scale, you know, if you had something on that order.
Yeah.
How to organize everything, get all the resources that you needed.
Yeah, you'd have, in an opioid situation, you need a much, a significant event. Generally, what you're looking at is 10, 15, 30 or more people. You, an event where you need to organize, generally on an opioid incidence, EMS police and fire can handle that as a normal incident. This is kind of ramping up to the next level. We have been contacted about WPPA union negotiations, they're going to hold off until the new chief is in place. The Police and Fire Commission did make a recommendation based on passing a background, so it should be done relatively shortly. We are working on combining a medical director between police, fire, and EMS, see how that goes. I have a contact today, I have a written proposal from the Fire Department and the Police Department on what we'd like to see, so we'll continue to move forward to that. Riverwood is on your agenda tonight, that encompasses American Way West and East, so you've got to remember, the proposal that's before you tonight is not necessarily American Way West, this is American Way East. We, they have provided us.
Can you define that again?
American Way West is from Brookstone Drive west to Industrial Drive along the south side of Wallace Park. Anything from Brookstone Drive east to Harvey is east. So the agreement you're dealing with tonight is basically all the areas from Brookstone Drive to Harvey Road. It does incorporate to some level Brookstone, or American Way West in the fact that as part of the agreement, they're going to provide right-of-way and stormwater detention easements to us, but that's, it's kind of a separate deal, because American Way West is a straight-up special assessment, whereas East is a specialized special assessment through the agreement that we provided you tonight. We are in, about to finalize the purchase of the Jaeger property, we're running an environmental, should be done pretty soon. We finally got the keys, and that's it. 2019 budgets will be out September, and the first meeting in September, if the river doesn't rise.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item number seven, acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board meeting of June 12th, 2018, and acceptance of the minutes of the Senior Advisory Board from July 5th, 2018. And those minutes will be placed on file. And item eight, council business, A, tavern operator licenses, would you please read those names for us, please?
You have before you Sherri Smith, Lane Smith, Elizabeth Ross, and Nicholas Zindars.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve or to issue tavern operator licenses for those four people? I move that we grant tavern operator's licenses to the four people mentioned.
I'll second.
Any, there's no discussion on that item, and call the roll. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0. Okay. Moves us to item B, the discussion decision on the request from the Tyranina Ladies Club to use the community center for fund, for their fundraiser. Is, who's, who's that going to? You?
This is pretty typical, they've done this a number of years, the community center policies requires that people who do a private fundraiser in the community center get approval from the council. You have a motion?
Yeah. Let's have the motion read, so we can get a motion on the table, and then we can discuss it further. I move motion 18-8-2-1. Okay, would you read the title to that, please?
Sure. Motion 18-8-2-1 authorizing the use of the Lake Mills Community Center by the Tyranina Ladies Club.
Okay, and have a.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second, okay. Now we can have further discussion, sorry about that, forgot to do that. Okay, as you said, this is, it's not annual, but it's close to annual, isn't it, sort of?
Yes, we see it quite often, it's not annual, it's upper close. But it basically allows this club to run a fundraiser on our property, but our policy says that the council has to approve it because of that condition.
Okay.
That's a fundraiser.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0. Okay. And item 8C, discussion and decision on the code compliance loan at Rock Lake Activity Center, and let me get back to my computer here, just a second. Okay, we do not, let's see, there's no motion on the computer, you know, for general motion. Do we need to have a motion before we can discuss this?
There's no motion given, so technically, we can start out as discussion and then if.
There should be a motion on the table.
You want a motion to open discussion?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I move that we approve the code compliance loan for Rock Lake Activity Center.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, which gives us the opportunity to discuss this. And we did have a closed session previous to this meeting tonight to take a close look at it, to make sure the i's were dotted, the t's were crossed, and we didn't have anything in it that we weren't expecting to have in it, so that part has been taken care of. So is there anyone on staff that wants to speak, or should we just, okay, I'll go to Steve, then?
I want to make sure that there weren't any misstatements on my part.
Okay.
The last meeting, my intention was is that I brought forward the compliance loan proposal, but that was my idea. It was your idea to look at how we could work with Rock Lake Activity Center. Mine was the vehicle to get your policy in place. I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that, that, I didn't start that, that was someone up, that was you as an organization, you were looking at different options, this is the one I came forward with. Based on conversations we had prior. This is the one I came forward with, based on conversations we had prior in a meeting. The other one is that I wanted to make sure, and I think Dan has mentioned it once already, but we would not be a first, we would be a second. I don't know if I made that misstatement or if I tied something together.
The security interest of the mortgage.
Anyways, I wanted to make sure those were clear. We have done everything from a staff standpoint as far as putting it together. I'm not going to, I don't want to give you any impression that we lean one way or the other because we do not. This is, this is up to you. We've provided you the vehicles you need. We have had clear conversations on the fact that we believe that there are a lot of risks in this. And I think that we've put forward that we're going to lose that $200,000 no matter what we do. And I know that there's been some debate about how, you know, how much further that could go, but I want to, I want to look at it from our standpoint and where we are today, and that's the conversations that we've had. We're willing to answer any other questions that you may have or bring up as far as the conversation and debate goes, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear for you.
I just want to, as council president, clarify that this is the site that the Senior Advisory Board recommended to the council for their, their, the programs that they've been hoping that the city will be able to provide. So even though, you know, we are not able at this time to build a building or purchase a building, or we just don't have the money to do that today. This is an attempt to give us some time to, before we, the city itself would, like, take over this building. But in the meantime, we want to give Rock Lake Activity Center the opportunity to continue operating, and that's why we're looking at this. We're not looking at it as a financial, a past, you know, something where we're going to make money. We're, that's not what this is about. This is an opportunity to help those of you, especially those here in the audience tonight that spoke, try to keep the Rock Lake Activity Center functioning, maybe even growing, and the city helping to keep, to make that happen. And yet have down the road, be able to look at maybe making that building into what we talked about in our goal session. But we can't do it today, so this is kind of a stopgap. Okay, that's all I need to say. You had something to say.
Yeah, we ran out of time in there. One question I wanted to ask is about becoming a second on the mortgage. Does the primary holder, is there any requirements that we would have to meet in order for them to approve us to be a second mortgage?
No, there may be requirements inside that mortgage with the R-LAC to have them, to compel them to provide notice of this, and they may have a function in place to restrict a second being put into place. We don't have knowledge of that at this point. So we're approaching it as though there is not a mechanism in place that would restrict our ability to loan this money and procure a second mortgage on the property. We're walking into it as it's drafted right now with knowledge that a primary exists and that we would be subordinate if we do put a mortgage in place on that property.
So that would also mean that we have no real, there's no real collateral being put up other than we may get first rights to-
Any, the, the security interest is subordinate to the, the primary that's in place. That's the best way to phrase it. We would not have first crack at the apple if there's a default on the current primary loan, right, the existing purchase money mortgage. We'd always be subordinate to it until such time that that loan no longer exists.
I do want to mention that the Senior Advisory Board felt strongly that this was the best site for future building, and there isn't a lot of choices, there aren't a lot of choices out there for this because of, you know, there just isn't. And so that's one of the other reasons why we're looking at this.
My understanding is the school uses this quite often. Is that correct? If we could, maybe we could suspend the rules. Maybe Ben would come up and give us some insight.
Or Susan.
Or Susan. So I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so the two of you can come up.
Sure.
You can fight over who speaks first. And I don't know, do you want a specific question or do you-
Well, understanding, my understanding is the, the school has some vested interest in that property as it stands right now with different programs that, that you guys run out of there. Is that, is that a true statement? Could you elaborate a little bit more on what those programs are?
It is. The, the school district houses their adults with cognitive disabilities, so students who have basically graduated from Lake Mills High School, but by state mandate, they are still provided an education until they are 21 years old. So I think this year, there are going to be seven students every day at the Activity Center. Their classroom is in our center, and there is an aide and a teacher, full-time teacher. And so they learn their life skills, counting money, job skills. They, in return for being housed at the school, or at the Activity Center, learn to wash the towels, they do some of our maintenance and cleaning, all things that they need to learn anyway, as part of their curriculum. So like I said, they are there every day from regular school day. I think theirs is eight to 1:30. And then we also have, for example, our after-school program. This year, we have 24 kids enrolled, where we pick up the children at the elementary school, walk them back after school, and they are given snack and homework time and, you know, provided some structure and games and crafts until their parents can come and get them. So it's a safe place for the, the children to come after school when their parents are working. So those are probably the two biggest school groups that we, that we address, but there are also sports teams.
Yeah, in some cases, if gyms are-
Ben, could you identify yourself?
Sorry, yes. Ben Dayton, Lake Mills Rec Department, Recreation Director. So yeah, in some cases, when gym space is not necessarily available within schools, we have had people who are typically members of R-LAC utilize the facilities there to hold practices and those sorts of things. But yeah, the primary, I think, use right now that's directly tied to the school district is the-
It's called the transition.
Transition program. Yep, that's, that's the main connection.
So we're also under the impression that the school has put some money into remodel or fix a few of those spaces?
I guess I can't comment to that.
Just the transition.
Come back up to the mic, please.
Last year, the school district, I believe they replaced some ceiling tiles in the classroom that the transition students were going to be in.
So I really have two more questions.
Sure.
Well, is this, is it, I'm just going to say it, I'm not sure if it's public knowledge. You're at a place where you're paying interest only on your primary mortgage, and if you're allowed to have this money and make these changes, what, what is your plan going forward to, to have proactive maintenance on some of these other things that you're unable to do right now? Do you have a, a plan moving forward? And the, the second question, let me get out before I forget it, I will forget it, is for, is for Ben. If for some reason, R-LAC closed down, how would the school handle those transition programs? Is there something that you guys have in place already that you could transition those folks to? So whoever-
We are, we are paying principal on our own, yes.
Okay, good.
So, see now I forgot your question because you asked-
Yeah, sorry. It was, it was maintenance.
Right, right.
Because that's, honestly, that's, that's the big-
Right.
-issue that's going on right now, is unable to-
Exactly.
-keep the stuff up.
Right. And as I stated before, the, you know, we are able to pay our bills, make the payments, meet payroll, all of that. It's just that we are never going to have the extra surplus to do the big projects like the roof and things like that. So it is my assumption that when we do improve the building, we're only going to grow our programs, and then we will have more money to maintain what we've put into the building. That, that people are going to come in and see a nice facility and say, I would like to join here. This, this looks good. I see good things going on. And the more members we have, the more programs we can support, you know, it's just, it's, I, I think the growth of the center will provide money for maintenance in the future.
Unfortunately, in regards to the transition program, it's not, nothing under my umbrella. I-
Yeah, sorry.
Sure.
I know that when they came to us to start this program last year at the Activity Center, I believe they had been housed in a church, maybe, and that just didn't work out very well. Basically, the, the students feel like they're, they're through with high school, and I think that they could return to the high school and use a classroom there if, if there was no other alternative. But I know that the program leaders really want them to get out in the community and start leading a, a real life outside of high school.
And, sorry, I, one more question. Our understanding is, I guess with putting this type of money forward, we would be able to guarantee a spot that we could bring the seniors into that building without an issue, create a senior center.
Right. There is an open room. The seniors had tried it several years ago before I was director and ended up having to leave because the conditions in the building were so uncomfortable. It was very cold, and so again, upgrading the HVAC system would, would help the comfort level, and they would be welcomed back. That would be great.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, if you still got a second, Susan? I guess my, I was with Mike. A lot of my questions were under the maintenance and operations because we're looking at the big, big pictures. We were counting on some of the facilities still being there for this major renovation project down the road. It's just being concerned, my concern was, we're going to make this investment. The challenge with just getting this is we're getting loan documents, we're not seeing a business plan or finances, so it's hard. We're basically making an investment on your word. It's just seeing that this investment's going to be there down the road. Is it going to be taken care of where the part of the facility we're hoping that's going to be there and in good shape is still there three years, five years, eight years from now, and we decide that that's the right time to move forward? Does that make sense? I'm looking at the long-term maintenance to maintain the facility so that this $200,000 doesn't become another $200,000-
Right.
-three years from now and $100,000 after that, and then we're going to go and throw it all the way down the road.
Right. And, and the, the roof that needs replacing is on the section of the building that is, according to the plans, going to remain intact when the new facility is built. So it's the oldest section of the building, but according to the architect's drawings, that section is in the best shape. So the new roof would stay. A new boiler can be transferred to a new building, I think. And there are a couple little things on the, what's called the newer part of the building that should, down the road, that part of the building be raised, that would be a loss. But most of the improvements that we need to make are right in that old section. That's going to remain intact.
You're talking about the section closest to the road?
Yes, yes.
Classrooms, gymnasium.
Right. That's the higher part of the building, and so it doesn't flood.
I agree that that's the part of the building we want to reuse. I don't know that the roof would remain the same.
Right. We may end up having to put a different roof line on there to do what we want to do.
Right. I imagine that when we go through and we, we're going to put a new roof line on and we're going to do new electric and, you know, depending on how this works out, I'm imagining quite a bit of the HVAC. Now the, the main boiler system should be fine, but some of that other, you know, the suggestions to us from the building inspector were to blow out the existing lines, and they've already done some work on the radiators and see how that worked before you started investing a lot of money in the rest of it. But the boiler, the boiler works that's in there, but I'm looking at it, I believe it's an original piece of equipment, and so I, I wouldn't-
Seen its better days.
Yeah, I wouldn't depend on it to last very long. So I, I looked at that particularly in conjunction with our requirement for the seniors. I know that being cold was an issue for them the last time.
Very definitely.
And if we get that blown out and get, and the radiators are working and you have a good boiler in there, that'll, that kind of raises the level of what we're doing.
Now how long have you been with them?
Only a year and a half.
Year and a half. And you sound pretty optimistic about programming and attendance?
I am, only because since I've been there, I've seen the growth of, as Michael explained, the pickleball growth, the exercise classes are growing, new families are coming in all the time. We had a couple of them tonight, just, so I, I feel optimistic simply because I see in spite of our awful building, people still come and enjoy the Activity Center. So I just believe that if it's a better, fresher, cleaner, you know, upgraded, more efficient building, they're only going to come, you know, it's, it's only going to improve.
And if we can get a handle on the heating, so the building is comfortable, it will also generate more activities, particularly, well, for little and older.
Right.
I mean, little kids shouldn't be in a cold environment either, so.
It's, it's the roof and the heating that are the big items. And because the roof was, had, the deferred maintenance on the roof has, has gone on so long that has had a domino effect in causing some mold and some ceiling tiles to crack and other things, you know, have, have escalated because the maintenance was not done a long time ago when it should have been. And again, no, there was no malice intended, it, it just no one, we did not have the funds, so.
You mentioned fundraising. Do you have current plans for fundraising for your, you know, programs and so forth?
Always in the fall, we do a major fundraiser. We work in conjunction with Tyranina Brewing, helping them with their, their run and their bicycling race. So with our help, they give us part of the profits. We also always have the Holiday Parade of Homes, which is a, a big event in Lake Mills, if, if any of you have been to that, and that's, it requires a lot of- And that's, it requires a lot of community input and volunteers and, but that's one of our major fundraisers in the winter. I think one of the speakers talked about the spring swing dance that we had last spring. So we're always trying to generate new ideas to fundraise. And the businesses in Lake Mills have been very generous with us and have provided donations and silent auction prizes and all of that. So we have a good relationship with a lot of them. So I assume that we will continue growing in the fundraising too.
And that can help you to meet your mortgage basis, you know?
Sure, yeah. We've had the round up from Lake Mills Market and, you know, those kinds of things that help.
Any other questions while she's here to answer them?
What are your other commitments besides the Activity Center?
Me personally?
Yes.
I'm a yoga teacher at the Yoga Co-op. Yeah, so.
Is that part, is that being helped?
No, no, that's just.
Okay, that's something you do on the side. Any other questions from council? Okay, well, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
And, yes, thank you. And a second, so if you would call the roll on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed, bar one.
Okay. Well, we wish you the best of luck with your new season and hopefully things go in a positive direction for all of you. And thank you for coming tonight, too. All right, discussion on employee health insurance options. And we turn over to, who's our presenter? Oh, what is your name?
Tiny Greg with M3 Insurance.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I'll pull you up on my thing. Are you going to be using the material we have to make your presentation?
Yeah, they had told me that the kind of plan design cost spreadsheet didn't turn out very well on your iPads, but I do know that Steve is going to kind of go through some of the financials so that might actually be a better venue for you to be able to see that stuff, but.
Which document are you going to start with?
This one here, the one that's up.
Okay.
So again, my name's Tiny Greg, I am with M3 Insurance. And the goal for tonight is basically just kind of walk through the Dodge-Jefferson Consortium project, kind of talk about the proposal, work that we've done, the cost, some of the plan designs, HSA in a component of a high deductible health plan, and then take any questions, answers at that time. Once I get done, I do know that Steve does have some financials to kind of show you as well, so.
Can I ask a question before you get started?
Yeah.
The way I read the documents, are we dealing with a self-funded insurance?
Nope. No, it still would be fully insured, it would be outside of the ETF programs, but it would still be a fully insured, functioned kind of health plan.
Yeah, well, if you're going to talk about that, or could you explain it now?
I wasn't going to, but I could explain it. So in today's world, you are still fully insured underneath ETF. You get a rate that you pay in and they then process and pay your claims out of that monthly and then annual fixed fees that they set aside for you. Self-funded is that you are financially solely responsible for all claims that come in regardless, from dollar one all the way through. So it's two different type of plan designs. And the specific ones that we're going to be looking at, that we have looked at, are fully insured. It would be with Dean or SSM Health out of Madison and Quartz are the ones that we receive proposals on.
So in other words, they're the underwriters?
Yep, they're the insurance company.
They're the insurance.
So how many people would be involved in those other governmental bodies?
Yep, so the, I'll just kind of get in a little bit. So there would be, right now, there's about eight entities that are involved in this Dodge-Jefferson County Consortium. There is Dodge in Jefferson County, there's also Lake Mills, there's City of Whitewater, there is City of Fort Atkinson, there's,
Jefferson, Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, thank you. So there's about eight entities right now that are pooling together. And the goal really was to kind of put all of these entities together to have more buying power in the health insurance industry, also to be able to have more control of your cost and be able to kind of look at and have a better renewal outcome. Right now, you usually wait until September, sometimes even into October before you get the rates from ETF to understand what is the plan design, are they going to be removing or getting rid of some of the plan design? Sometimes that stuff isn't made readily available until after you guys have to put your budget together. Steve mentioned earlier that he was going to have 2019's budget available in September. Sometimes when you're looking at health insurance, you don't have your quotes back from ETF. This plan design and this project requires for the insurance company either being Dean or Quartz to be able to have that stuff available ahead of time so you guys can do it. So one of the things that we've done, so it was, it's kind of a two-year program process that's been in place back in 2017. We really started engaging because again, Dodge and Jefferson County wanted to be able to pool themselves together and have better buying power within the health insurance industry. However, by the time the ETF rates came out, it was too late to actually make any decisions. So in late 2017, it was decided not to move forward. Also, the rates and the proposals that came back from the fully insured carriers were not competitive. They were honestly not competitive what was available for you guys. So in late 17, it was decided not to do it. In early part of 18, we actually re-engaged conversations. We got back together, we started talking about different plan designs. Do we want to look at a high deductible health plan with a health savings account component that actually is tied to it? Do we want to look at adding other different levels of structure? Stability was another concern of yours. So we wanted to make sure when we went out to bid, we put in structures for you. So with the Dean proposal that came back, it actually gives us a four-year rate cap. So it gives you ability to look at the second and third year. Rate cap would be nothing to exceed 7.5%. So worst-case scenario in your second and third year, you wouldn't see anything, any increase above 7.5%. Right now, going into 2019, we're not quite sure where you guys are going to come in with ETF. It also gave you, they also gave you a four-year, so worst-case scenario within your fourth year of being with Dean, you would not see anything that would exceed the 9.9%. Now, that doesn't mean that that's where they're automatically going to put you at. They're obviously going to look at claims, they're going to look at claims as the entire pool. So again, you're having buying power with all eight entities that I named previously so you can put all of that together. But again, they won't exceed 9.9% after, up for four years. So that allows for you to put a budget together for four years going forward. One thing that I do want to point out, and this kind of goes along with what you're saying, is that the Dean quote does require a minimum of 1,200 subscribers. So with that being said, if Dodge and Jefferson County decide not to move forward with it, then this would be something that we would need to go back as the city council, M3 Dean. We would need to go back to the table and kind of figure out what that process and what that would look like. But in order for our, the rates to remain firm, we do need at least 1,200 subscribers within the entities. I will say right now, you're about 1,800 with everyone together. So we really don't think that there'd be a problem, but that is something I do want to call out as we look at these slides.
If I remember correctly, Dodge County has 900.
They do.
Jefferson County has 600. So if those two pull out, there probably wouldn't be much option left. But I don't see them pulling out.
No.
Even if they do, they would do it early enough that we could continue to stay with the state.
So you're thinking with this, it's either or. With these type of proposals, you would either go with Dean or with the Quartz proposal and the employee wouldn't be able to choose between?
Yes, they would have the HMO or the PPO options. But yes, that would be the two options that they would have.
Yeah, we wouldn't, sorry, we wouldn't be able to do what's called dual choice in the different networks. So it would be, and right now, Dean's proposal is definitely the most competitive and they're the only ones that are willing to give a four-year 9.9, not to exceed rate cap.
So if we did that, everybody would have to go with Dean?
Correct. Yep.
Potentially risk moving doctors, stuff like that, but I'm just.
Yeah.
In this area, that's pretty minimal.
Yeah.
In fact, you get more doctors here than with Dean than you do with some of the other ones. The, the, one of the advantages of the four-year rate cap is that after three years, you can go back to the state. Once you opt out of the state, you have to be out for three years.
Yeah, it's just, I'm just having a hard time with us understanding how we can, we can have better buying power this way than we can through ETF. And that's just, maybe you'll explain that later on, but that just seems awfully, awfully hard.
And I think that's a great question. Specifically with Dean, right now, the majority of your population is on Quartz.
Yeah.
So Quartz utilizes the UW hospital system, right? Dean's buying power is that they are going to give you less, lower rates in order to come onto their plan because they know they're going to make their money at their hospital, at SSM. So that's why they can give us such great rates in order to bring them over and be able to keep them sustainable because all of that buying power is now moving from one hospital system to their hospital system.
Without force folks that would normally go to like Watertown or something like that, force them to go to Madison in order to stay in network and things like that? That's what I'm making the assumption.
No, what it does is it forces you, when you use specialists, to go there. So like most of us now, have you been using Watertown and Fork? But when we get specialists, we go to the university. Well, now, that would be different. You could use the locals and, but as you continue to graduate up, you would use Dean until such a point in time that they determined that there was another specialist out there. But yes, if we had a specialist like I have a back surgeon who is at the UW, I would now be using a back surgeon at Dean. But I would still use all my other doctors on the way to that.
I will add on to what Steve was saying. If there are individuals that are in the middle of treatment leading into 1-1 of 2019, there is a treatment transfer form that an individual can complete and that will be reviewed by a physician at Dean as whether or not they can stay at the hospital or at the, within the Quartz system or if they can be transitioned, if they're at the end of their transition, if they can be transitioned into Dean's physicians. So that is something that's there. I will say that if they are in the middle of cancer or on ecology treatment or even third trimester pregnancy, those are situations that would not be transitioned over. Those would maintain with their existing specialists until they are ready to be transferred over. So there are some situations where that can remain the same.
And I know Dean was St. Mary's and a Catholic. Is there any issue still with folks not being able to receive care, you know, birth control, contraceptives, things like that? Is there anything that would limit people if they were forced to use Dean that they do now? That they wouldn't be able to do any type of conscientious things where the doctors, nurses wouldn't treat them?
Right. I will say, I believe, I actually am a Dean user. So the answer's no, I can still use that, it's still covered within. I have the state program today, I use Dean today, and so that's still available for me today.
This would be the first time we've been on Dean either. You know, in the state program, generally, you get that tier level and then everybody's looking at the one that doesn't cost them any money. And they've all switched to that one. So probably from what, 2004 to 2008, we all had Dean. And it wasn't until around eight that Quartz became competitive. And even then, there are some other programs that, one year, most of us, a lot of us went to Mercy Care. Because Mercy Care was the low, was the only one where you didn't have to pay. So it depends on the state program. So for us to have switched around is, I don't think is as big of a deal as a lot of people think. You know, I was, the county looked at it because they have a lot of people who live on the east side. So a lot of them use Aurora and those types. And they said that 98% of their people didn't have to switch doctors. But we do provide a PPO just in case, for someone. Rob would be the primary example, he might be that one.
If we, you had said that if the cost came in too high, for some reason, we could go, we could stay with ETF? To get out of ETF, do we have a certain amount of notice we have to give them to get out of the state program? Because it might be that we're going to be in that window where you have to give notice. And then it's like, uh-oh, we don't want to leave, we could get caught in that window.
Well, what happens is, we've all agreed to make a decision by a certain date. So what we're looking at is that there's no way that the state could beat the Dean proposal. So if, it would be, people would back out because of coverage reasons. And so they would do that at a date before the first, not based on the numbers. And as you know, we have to, we have to send in some of them before October 1st withdrawing. We have to provide them with a resolution. That's why we're here now, that's why we didn't make it last year because we couldn't get everybody to get their resolutions in place and agree. So that's been kind of the deal, is we set a deadline, whether it's yes or no.
Are there provisions for the retirees to stay and go into the insurance?
Yes, we have put together a package for retirees. Like I said, we did the PPOs, we did the retirees. They're a little bit different than the rest of us, but it's there.
Quartz was newly formed, what was the original?
Unity.
Unity? That was UW?
Yes.
UW and physicians plus.
Yeah, it's unity and physicians plus.
Quartz is.
Yeah.
So with the proposals that came in, and I know that, like I said, Steve will kind of look at more of the financials, one of the options would be moving to what is considered a high deductible plan that has a health savings accounts component to that in which there's the potential for the single coverage to be at $1,500 and $3,000. But with the savings that is projected for Dean, we're able to put that money actually into those individuals' accounts. I know right now, you're on a zero deductible or the employees are on a zero deductible plan. So really, for them, it would be no change as the way that their actual, their plan would look. They would have a health savings account, which is portable, they can put money into it, it can save, the interest can roll year to year. But there would be a change to that potentially with the proposal that was provided. You could do annual contributions, it also could be divided up. It could be divided up into quarterly, whatever works with the city as to how you want to kind of deposit that into their accounts. But what I will say is that the amount that is available in the HSA is only available for withdrawal for health-related claims. I do know that myself and my partners have gone around and have had meetings with the different entities about health savings accounts, what that looks like, how does a claim process and feel? How do you pull the funds out of the savings account to pay for that annual medical claim? And from what I understand, those discussions. And from what I understand, those discussions have actually gone very well. So there is that component that was added in and brought to the table for the council to look at. And with that, Steve, I will, um, before we move into the financials of what Steve has, do you have any questions? I know we went quickly through it, um.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah.
Not being real familiar well with the high deductibles and so on.
Mm-hmm.
Versus no deductible.
Yeah.
Is there any problems with coverage?
Nope. Nope, so the, the high deductible plan, the requirement of a high deductible plan is that first dollar, and it has to be either medical and/or prescription drug, must accumulate to, towards whatever that deductible is. The only thing that cannot communicate, go towards that is preventative. Preventative still must be covered at a hundred percent, that's according to all of the guidelines. But anything, it could be a prescription drug will track towards that. Um, it could be a office visit, a hospital stay, all of those dollars must track towards that deductible. And the member, again, will have those funds to be able to use with a debit card, a checkbook that's in their savings account to be able to pay at the spot or once those, those services are, are brought.
So I know the ETF, I'm sorry Diane.
No, go ahead, it's fine.
I know with ETF, you get the options, you know, of your, your dental and your eye and stuff like that. And my understanding, there's the basic dental involved in stuff like this. I got stuck into a trap thinking that the basic dental was gonna cover stuff and then finding out it doesn't cover crowns and things like that. Is it the same type of situation the folks would be put in here? They would have to, uh, add some type of, uh, extra Delta, something like that for covering those?
The dental part of it?
Yeah.
Yep, dental, dental and medical would still be two separate buckets as they are today. So the dental plan would be separate than what we're, we're talking through right now. But that would still be the same kinda coverage. We, uh, really just focused on the health insurance portion of, of the ETF plan right now. I know that you guys offer the dental, um, but it would be a Delta Dental situation. We would mirror that plan to make sure that there isn't any major changes between that. Dental is, is easy, we have great partnership with Delta Dental, so what we would do is work with that carrier to make sure that that plan matched.
We already have two Delta plan, uh, uh, when I say that, we allow the employees to purchase the state health plan that includes dental.
Right.
Um, but we also have a dental plan separate.
Oh, okay.
So we're just gonna opt, we're just gonna raise that up and use that. The employee pays a hundred percent of the dental now, they could pay the dental from the other plan. The HSA then provides them with an opportunity to use money towards, um, all the costs that it doesn't provide because neither one of them provides a lot of money towards significant items. But the HSA will cover a lot of those costs. So, um, in, in the long run, I think they get a little bit better bang for their buck even though neither dental plan is great, they are different. I think, uh, the one that we have that's separate from the state plan is more of an emergency type, so it does cover crowns and things like that, but it doesn't do a great job on the, on the maintenance stuff. Whereas the one through the state does a great job in the maintenance stuff, but doesn't follow up much on the, um, emerg, or the major dental work. So it's kind of a compromise here, but because there's an HSA there that you can put the money in and then use it for those types of things, it kinda balances out. You use your HSA for the minor ones like, um, dental and, or, you know, your dental visits, your cleanings and your exams, and then the big ones, the other insurance contributes a lot more. But it, neither one is a beautiful plan, I mean, it's, you know, if the employees wanted to opt up, we'd be willing to discuss that, but right now, they're, they're pretty low-end on the fact that the employees wanted the minimum amount of coverage while, um, not having to contribute a lot because they pay a hundred percent.
I have a question, is your HSA, um, connected to the calendar year? Does the money have to be used up by the end of the year?
Nope.
It rolls over?
It rolls over, yep. HSA is different, um, from a flexible spending account. Flexible spending account has that use it or lose it provision within there. So does a health reimbursement arrangement, sometime they have that use it or lose it, or you. An HSA, um, is portable, so it rolls from year to year for an employee. But what I will say is that if an employee decides to leave the city, those funds move with them. So that's a, that's a portable savings account for that individual to take with them.
Belongs to the employee.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Would we, would you have to sign up for the high deductible plan in order to get the HSA?
Yes. Yeah, the HSA has to be paired with a high deductible plan that's recognized by the IRS levels, which is, the, it has to be at least twenty, or twelve seventy, or thirty, three thousand fifty, so.
In this situation, the high deductible is irrelevant in the way we're proposing to do the plan. Let's say you're a family and you got a three thousand deductible. The three thousand is cumulative on everybody, so when, it's not per individual.
Right, so once that's paid off, then everything else is covered?
Everything else is covered.
Right.
On January, well, the first week in January, we put three thousand dollars in your HSA. So you would now have a credit card, your deductible for the year is covered.
Oh, that's a nice benefit.
Now, we would pay a hundred percent of the health insurance because there's no eighty-eight percent requirement anymore. The health insurance is cheap enough that we can make the contribution and they no longer have to pay that forty-five dollars a month that they currently pay. The only thing they'd have to pay is about two dollars a month for their HSA, depending on how much money they keep in it, because if it's the one plan we looked at, if they had three thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars in their, um, the fees were waived. But twenty-four dollars a year versus forty-five dollars a month, I think is pretty significant. I recommend it to them that they take that forty-five doll, dollars a month and put it in their HSA. Because if you're looking at, there are certain expenses that are qualified towards your three thousand dollars. The dental and the vision and those types of things. So the more money you can get in there, if you're using your three thousand dollars every year, you don't have a lot of options, but if you can build up some money in there, this earns interest. That interest is yours, this rolls over, that money is yours. Some people, I know, save it, they don't even, they pay everything cash out of their own pocket and they save that money for when they retire, when they're on a limited income, and they can pay out of that, and it's all tax-free. So you have a lot of different ways of utilizing this money. Now she said it would be exactly the same for all employees, it will not be exactly the same. There are some unique situations that, that it doesn't cover exactly the same. Children over nineteen, children over eighteen who aren't full-time students and make more than forty-five hundred dollars. Well, they, they still get full insurance coverage, which is required by federal law out of twenty-six, but they can't use the HSA. So, you know, like in my family, with my drug prescriptions, I might burn that three thousand dollars relatively quickly and it's never, it's not an issue for the child. But if they, you know, if they're the first one in at the beginning of the year and they have a, uh, eighteen thousand dollar procedure, which doesn't take much. My son got picked up and hauled by the ambulance and had some testing at the hospital, was ten thousand dollars. Well, three thousand dollars right off the top has to be paid since that child doesn't qualify. They have some problems. People, um, Medicare, we have one person whose wife is on Medicare. The insurance pays, but they can't use an HSA for them. And that's because Medicare supposedly will pick it up, but there, there are debates about exactly how that gets paid out and those types of things. So it's not exactly what we have now, but right now, our employees have copays. They don't have any deductibles, but they do have copays and they have monthly payments. So when you start to balance it out, most, ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point nine percent of the employees, as a joke from my wife, will benefit from the program, other than the fact that when they get referred, they're gonna get referred to Dean instead of their preferred one, but.
Plus the city will benefit from it too.
Um, well, if you wanna go through that, I can go through that for you too.
Yeah, uh, you were gonna talk about it a little bit anyway, I thought.
Yep, so the, the, uh, I provided you with a memo.
Yep.
I, I, I told you I would do, uh, an apples-to-apples comparison. So I provided a comparison of the existing insurance we have compared to the Dean proposal and then something that was similar with the state compared to the Dean proposal. So I, I don't, I don't know how clear it was for you, but.
Do you want me to go to video?
Yes, please, if you could. There we go.
Perfect, clears my.
We're projecting that we would be, we have, uh, forty-three employees on family and fourteen on single. We were projecting that the state plan that we currently have was gonna be, uh, seventeen hundred ninety-six, almost eighteen hundred dollars a month. Seven hundred and fifty-nine for the family, um, for about eighty-seven thousand dollars, almost eighty-eight thousand dollars a month, which probably is gonna be pretty accurate because I, if I remember correctly, Betsy, we're already paying about eighty-two, eighty-three. So it's not a significant increase even. The, uh, Dean proposal, which is listed as HMO, is at twelve eighty-three and five thirteen. Uh, comes in at, um, sixty-two thousand dollars a month for a savings difference of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. When you convert that into an annual, that's three hundred and six thousand dollars savings for the city. Then you have to throw in, then it says less has, the computer automatically corrects and I couldn't get it to stop, that's supposed to be HSA.
Oh.
The, uh, so you throw in the HSA that we provide the employees, we make that upfront payment for them every year, uh, fifteen hundred and three thousand, and it drops, the savings drops to a hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that translates to about eighty-eight thousand dollars in the general fund and then the rest is in like an electric, water and sewer. The state does offer a, uh, a high deductible health insurance plan. And, uh, last year it was thirteen fifty-six seventy-six, um, for the family and five hundred and fifty-three dollars, um, for the, uh, single. When you price that out, it's at sixty-six thousand, um, Dean comes in at sixty-two yet. So that's a savings of about thirty-seven hundred dollars a month or annually about forty-five thousand dollars. So you've got, uh, pretty much an apples-to-apples comparison on the state. They're not exactly the same, the state still has that eighty-eight percent. Uh, they still have deductibles, they do have an HSA that they provide. I don't know if there are any fees associated with that, um, but it wouldn't have been a significant difference. Twenty-four dollars versus zero is, is probably not a significant difference. So either way, the Dean program, uh, saves us money, um, in comparison to the state plan. One of the things that we've been noticing over the years is, we used to have quite a range of people in our tier and that's been thinning out and thinning out and thinning out. So the option of being able to find a plan that's below the eighty-eight percent, um, hasn't been happening. So like I said, this year, most people had to contribute forty-five dollars a month. Uh, that's gonna continue to grow. So when you look at the options here, the savings and then the, the monthly costs to the employees, it gets to be a pretty significant difference. I anticipate, if, based on the conversations that I've seen, that at some point in time, the state will be one provider in a region. I think that was the proposal at one time, is they have one provider in each region. That would totally eliminate the average and you would have to pay the, the total eighty-eight percent, which could get to be pretty pricey. So like, this, going with this program outside ETF, we don't have to pay the eighty-eight percent. So our employees still get a pretty good deal, it's not exactly the same as the current one, um, but it's, it's pretty good. I mean, they, and in the long run, some of them end up with a really significant option because you have your own HSA, that money's yours, um, you can use it. You can even take it out and use it for non-health insurance things, like buying a TV. You just have to pay taxes and a penalty. But I think in the long run, that they're gonna find it, if they figure out how to use this, um, it works out pretty well. It does require them to pay a little bit more attention to how they're spending their money. They're gonna wanna save all their receipts, they're gonna wanna make sure that they keep track of that and have that available for filing their taxes. But to a certain extent, that's the goal, is to make people understand what their health insurance is costing.
And I'm, I'm assuming you'll bring in experts to explain all this to all of them, give them all?
We've already had one group go around. I think they'll go back and sit down and try and figure out the tough questions. And, um, we have another meeting next week and, uh, we'll probably have a couple more. M-three provides a specialist to us year-round for questions on how to handle their HSA and their, uh, Dean, uh, provides a special program for us, uh, to help people through their insurance issues. They also provide us some additional options like, uh, video health and that type of stuff. So it's, to a certain extent, I think we got bought. They, they bid pretty low, like she said, they have ways of trying to recoup their money. Be interesting to see what happens at the end of the fourth year, but at that time, we can go out for bids or we can go back to the state.
Yeah. Okay.
This is only a discussion item.
Yes.
So there's no decision to be made at this time.
Eventually, if we continue forward this, you'll get the budgets, the budget, I have two budgets laying there, one with and one without. You'll get the one with. If we decide to go this way, you'll need a resolution passed at the second meeting in September.
Okay.
So this is really dependent on all of the members of the group going along?
No, this is dependent on the council making the decision. Oh, you mean all the members of the consortium?
Yeah.
Really Jefferson County and Dodge.
Really, really Jefferson County and Dodge, because they take us over the twelve hundred number. All the other cities could drop out, but as long as those two are in, I guarantee you B. Redam's gonna be in. B. Redam's already got the program by themselves. They see a significant savings by going with the consortium. I believe Dodge is going to be in. Dodge is big enough that if we bring all the cities in, we probably don't need Jefferson.
Yeah, the way that, and actually my counterpart, Jeff Ireland, who is the account executive, uh, at M-three that works with me, he's actually at the Dodge County Board meeting right now, having this exact same conversation with them, so. Yeah, it's all leaning towards those larger to kinda jumping on because of the significant savings being available to them.
Yes, I, I've been having a lot of conversations with Ben and Jim, Ben, Ben Waymire, with the Jefferson County Administrator, Jim, the Dodge County Administrator. There is no way they're not gonna go with one of these programs.
Okay, one last question, just to clarify. So then at the end of four years, if Dean were to come back with another proposal and we don't like it, we still have the option to go back to the state or do something else?
At the end of the fourth year, we go out for bids again. And if we don't like any of the proposals, we can go back to the state. That's why it's structured the way it is. You have that four-year, you got that time and the fourth year to evaluate the bids again and if they don't come in, you can opt back into the state if they still have a program.
Yeah.
And I will say that one of the reasons why you did it this way is if this council decides that they need to opt back in, you don't have to get all eight entities to agree to it, to opt back in, like, like a co-op would require everyone to vote on that, all of the entities. So this council could make a decision that you opt back in and everyone else could stay with whatever the proposal is, just to kind of make sure you understand how that works.
Yeah, the consortium doesn't need us. Yeah, the consortium doesn't need us. We make the decision based on our own.
So, in other words, you're looking at this as being pretty flexible?
Very flexible. We tried to remain as flexible as possible. At some point in time, we may look at it as cooperative and go through the paperwork to do a cooperative. But at this point in time, we wanted to be as flexible as possible and look at, you know, what the options were. There have been significant changes going on with the state health insurance plan. We, you know, we've heard banging around about multiple different options. I guarantee you that they've been thinning out the tiers, which makes it more expensive for the, significantly more expensive for the employee. So, finding an option that is good for us and good for the employee, as in my opinion, has a lot of advantages. I know that, you know, some of them might not have exactly the same doctors all the time, but when you look at the long-term advantages that they're going to gain, I guarantee you they're pretty significant.
And coverage would be very close to being the same?
Yes. Almost exactly the same.
Specifically because the entire deductible is funded in the HSA by the city.
Well, he's looking for all the medical coverages and what the maxes are and...
All right. Then seeing no other questions or discussions, I think we should move on to item E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming. Discussion and decision on the developer's agreement for Riverwood Holdings LLC. We do have a motion in our packet, motion eighteen eight two one three. Would you read that title, please?
Motion eighteen-eight-two-three directing city manager to execute an agreement with Riverwood Holdings LLC.
Are we all on the same page? Okay, that's right.
Yeah, I thought you were asking me to read the motion.
Oh, no, no, no. You did enough on the other one. We'll, we'll pass it around a little bit. Okay, is there a motion to, to go with this? Somebody want to give me a motion? I have a motion. You want to give me a?
I will move motion eighteen-eight-two-three.
And a second.
Okay, thank you. So, now we can discuss this?
This is the area of the proposal. This is American Way that's in Brookstone now. This is Brookstone Drive over here, so this is coming from Brookstone Drive. And this over here is Harvey Road. This plat was completed in, I think, two thousand and four. Vicki may remember it. It was phases four through ten. Four, five were completed. This is six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The purple would be the first phase, then the orange, the green and the red. The developer's agreement is structured that we move the process of getting plats up to date, getting all the construction plans done, getting all the work done, awarding the bids, contracting it and special assessing Riverwood Development. And then he has three years to make payments, is it three or five? Five years to make payments. We basically kind of move through this in the fashion that is how fast the lots sell. He already has a builder who wants to build on all the lots. So, they believe they can do twenty lots a year. We are not required to do all the phases. For some reason, there's a market crash. We don't have to continue to move forward this. This is kind of a mutual agreement that as long as the market's good, we continue to move forward. One of the reasons that we've proposed this is that we want to keep that new construction going up. And in order to be able to do that, we have a couple of things that we've been working on is this commercial, industrial and residential. And to get the residential to move along, we needed to kind of take on some of the action ourselves. Actually, financially, we have very little commitment other than, than the five years on the special assessment. But in the long run, we have a lot to gain because there's a lot of new assessed.
So, this is about a four-year plan right here, building about twenty a year?
I would say yes. There is another phase. We haven't finalized that one yet. It's at one part south of the park. He's, he's still debating whether to give it to us for a park or build it out. Either way, I think we win because I think he can get about, I don't know, you remember Vicki? I think there's about room for eighty condos in there.
Something like that.
And so, we would, we would gain a significant much assessed value for that too. So, either way, I think we benefit. We wanted American Way pushed through now anyways because it's a significant traffic problem with Brookstone coming down there and dead-ending and then having to come back out. Being able to come in under this route and go up CP Avenue and get around has, has significant traffic advantages. We always, we already have the sewer and the water in. We already have the road grade in. It's basically putting in the base material and the concrete and asphalt. So, it's, it's a pretty quick turnover on American Way West. This area here does have some construction issues. So, that's why the purple is up first. The purple already has the water and sewer constructed or the rock isn't an issue. So, like the purple up in the northeast corner there, which is this area here, rock isn't a significant issue. There is rock there, but it doesn't impact the basements. It does impact the basements in this area here, but the water and sewer is already in. So, basically, we have the roadway construction and the storm drainage and we don't really have to worry about it. The rock ledge kind of runs through here like this. And so, this phase here, we're going to have to be doing a lot of grinding to finalize the, the water and the sewer. And I, when I say a lot, the actual highest spot is right about here and then it starts to drop off. So, right in this area, you got about seven and a half feet before you hit dirt or rock. And then over here, you're getting into the ten, twelve. And as you get up over into here, it gets to be, you know, between twelve and fourteen feet. And it kind of varies. Here it gets, it's about nine and then it drops back down to ten, twelve here. So, overall, the, the most difficult part of the construction is in this area here. And then the rest of it's pretty, pretty standard. But it does complete the plat as originally platted. It allows us to pretty much move it forward, do all the, complete all the plating documents, do all the bidding, get the construction all done and then just send out a special assessment.
So, you're, you're talking about taking bonds to complete a lot of this work and then recouping that with special assessment and now...
That, but those bonds are revenue bonds because we're special assessing.
Okay, so that doesn't go against the...
Special assessment fund and then...
Got you.
Because we have guaranteed revenue source, they become geo-bonds or revenue bonds, not geo-bonds.
Now, the only concern I have with this whole thing right here is once we get American Way finished, are we going to allow trucks up and down that? To me, that would be a big concern, bringing those through the residential area, especially coming right out of the industrial park. So, it's just something I...
In the long run, I anticipate that that's the way it's going to go. The design was laid out for that. The roadway is wide. There are no driveways allowed on it except for a couple down there by the pond. So, it really looked at as, as being a major thoroughfare. Harvey Road isn't really designed to handle trucks. The, the main issue that we've had so far is that the way we've subdivided the industrial park hasn't allowed the GPS systems to make an accurate assessment of how it's subdivided. So, they have a hard time finding industrial and enterprise drive. They always find Brookstone. So, a lot of times you'll find trucks going down Brookstone, getting to the end down there and then not being able to get over to where they need to be and they, and they can't figure out how to get back and around. So, this, this allows that completion along the south side. Will it, you know, will it reduce the amount of truck traffic on Brookstone? Yeah, I think it will because I think they'll take Harvey Road and come over rather than going down through Brookstone. But at this point in time, Brookstone isn't, Brookstone Drive isn't really designed to be a truck traffic road. American Way is. We kind of looked at that from the beginning is how do you get the traffic through here? Are they out creating a lot of difficulty in the subdivision? That's why there's several cul-de-sacs on the bottom end. It discourages through traffic and, but it allows traffic in. There are no driveways on it, so you have a situation where, while you do have a through road that trucks are going to use because it's, the road's designed to handle it, the neighborhoods are designed to function around that. And the vast majority of the neighborhoods are going to be new constructed and it's, it's kind of like buying next to in Brookstone or up on Brewster. The fact that you didn't know that the multi-family was coming or that this roadway was going to be this way has been on the plat designed this way for fourteen years.
Yeah, no, I just know that with, with the amount of word we get brought to us every week about the speeds on Brookstone, I just know that this is going to be another one of those issues. That's, that's the reason I brought it up.
I, I'll comment on that a little bit because you know that Pat and I were out there a lot. And Pat has done a lot of surveys and he's also given the property owners an opportunity to take the speed gun and, and do their own surveys. And the traffic comes back rarely traveling faster than thirty miles an hour and almost done over thirty-five. So, it's, it's a...
It's perception.
It's a perception.
You're right. And if folks think that, how do I want to put this? If folks think that other people are more concerned about their safety than they are, then they may need to rethink their thoughts. So, basically, teach your kids right from wrong. Don't tell them to run out in the road. Tell them to look both ways if they're doing something because you can't rely on that person to be thinking about your safety. They're thinking about them getting from point A to point B and you're the last thing on their mind. So, yeah, we as residents in that area need to take safety in our own, in our own hands and talk to our kids about it.
That's true in every street in this city.
Right.
More so those that go someplace compared to those that are dead ends. But, you know, you really have to be careful.
Yeah. Thanks, Steve.
I just wanted to ask now, so, American Way West is not part of this?
No, it's not part of this proposal.
When will we see something for that?
We've actually sent the plat or the CSM to them to sign off on granting the right-of-way and the stormwater.
So, that is moving along?
Yes. So, the roadway can, we've already started design. We will have plans out probably in January to construct that next year.
Next year.
The, the, the real issue has been whether he's going to dedicate that land for a park or not.
Can you show me on this map? I know there's, I've seen parks up in this subdivision, but I can't tell you where they are. Can you show me where they are with your finger?
Let's see. There's a park right here.
Right there, okay.
Yeah, and then there's a big park right here, Wallace Park is right here.
Big Wallace Park, but there's also a small little one where you had your, put your finger there again where that other one is, that one up there. So, it isn't, if we don't do a park down at the pond area down there, it's not like there's no park in this subdivision?
No, the, the parks have already all been dedicated.
Yeah, and I mean, and there's lots of, with, with Wallace Park, but even you have that little one there too for younger kids and...
Right. But we've asked him to dedicate that other eleven acres. He's considering it. Some of the issues that we had is debating design issues.
Okay.
And that's the area that's directly south of American Way that hasn't been completely, the eleven acres he...
Yeah, what we're looking at is this area right here.
Yes, okay, for a park?
Yes, we've, we've asked him to dedicate that for a park.
Okay.
We've been basically making this a baseball park. And, you know, if we put the high school diamond up here, this will all be baseball.
Okay.
So, we've been looking at converting this into soccer complex. But, and, and so, one of the debates was is the original design of this area, we had accepted it, we had approved a preliminary plat or a concept plan on the site. And in order to make the stormwater drainage work, you had to raise the road significantly, particularly down on this end.
Okay.
And our design left the road pretty flat until right about here and then we did a steeper grade coming in. And it made the stormwater drainage layout in here more difficult. And so, you know, we sent back to, to Mr. Juisty and said, hey, you have the option of paying to raise the road now or designing your development knowing that you have to adjust your drainage to meet the road design. And he opted to allow us to build the road to the design that we had and that he hadn't really made a decision on whether he wanted to develop that or not. But I, I told him it's, it's irrelevant to us. I mean, you know, there's other areas there that we could probably convert to soccer fields. If he's building another eighty condos, that's a, that's a lot of assessed value to us.
So, it's up in the air yet?
Yes, that part's up in the air.
Gotcha.
And we're willing to go either way, but this road will be constructed sometime next year.
Next year, one way or the other?
Unless, unless all the contractors disappear.
Not again. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your answering my question. Anybody else have something for Steve? Otherwise, let's call the question.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritch?
Hi.
Motion passed by zero.
Okay. And that takes us to Resolution eighteen thirty-three. Would you please read that for us in its entirety?
Resolution eighteen-three-three, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills from Blaise Knippel. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Blaise Knippel for his service to the city of Lake Mills as a student representative on the City Council. And whereas Blaise Knippel has served on the City Council with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and desire to learn and understand local government. And whereas Blaise Knippel has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the council discussions while exhibiting the highest level of enthusiasm for his opportunity to participate. And whereas Blaise Knippel's notable participation in school and community organizations, ability to communicate, desire to learn and be a civil civic problem solver have made a lasting contribution to the city of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize and the dedicated public service and local participation of Blaise Knippel and extends best wishes for an enjoyable future.
All right. Do I have a motion? Someone, so moved, do I have a second? Oh, there's a fight over here. I guess everybody just wants to get in on this. So, okay, Vicki is the second. All right. Discussion.
I want to thank Blaise for his presence and his contributions at times and wish him all the best of luck in the future.
Can we ask where you're going?
Yeah, I'll be attending UW-Madison. I move in a week from today.
And you're doing what, poli sci?
Yeah, I'm not for sure yet. I'm kind of deciding between poli sci and economics.
The law.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Digital science.
Economics.
We need good minds in poli sci so that there are people out there to run this country. Anybody can figure out the money. Sorry, Steve. I couldn't pass that opportunity. But anyway, anybody else have any comment? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fritch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Unanimously, yes.
Heather, you wanna comment on it? I think we're doing, we're putting the resolution in a frame.
Yes, it, yes, it will be put into a frame and...
It was quite the resolution.
And it will be ready sometime next week when Misty's back to, she has some other things for you, she said, so...
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So we'll let you know when it's ready to pick up or we can mail it if you'd like.
Okay.
And if you have any feedback for us as a council or staff that would make, you know, being in your position even better than we did for you, please let us know because we wouldn't necessarily know that ourselves since we're not in your seat, so...
I just wanna say that Lake Mills is a great city. I'm extremely grateful every day I wake up to be born in this city and raised in this city. And it's ran by some fantastic people. And I've really enjoyed sitting on the council with you guys and being able to learn from all of you. So thank you for that.
Maybe someday you'll come back to Lake Mills like some other people. We would be much appreciative, so, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance eleven ninety-three. Would you please, well, see, what do we do with this one?
It's a first reading.
Yeah, so do we, it's been a while since we had an ordinance. Just trying to jog my mind.
I think on the first reading, just the title is read and then somebody tells us about it.
Okay, first reading, title read, please.
Ordinance eleven ninety-three, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification numbers zero one eight zero seven one three one two two three zero zero one, zero one eight zero seven one three one two two one zero zero zero, and zero one eight zero seven one three one two one three zero two seven.
Okay, and this is the first reading.
That tells you everything you wanted to know, right?
Okay, anything you want to say about the ordinance?
It includes real estate around the interchange. So there's a house on the north side of Tyranny Park Road, just west of Quick Trip.
Oh, okay.
That's still in the town. That's part of this annexation. That's the one point nine or two nine or whatever parcel. Then there's a thirty-two acre parcel. That's the one that's wholly bounded by the city on the north side of the interstate, right up against the ramp. On the east side of the ramp. On the east side of eighty-nine, north of the ramp. There's thirty-two acres there. The Olson property runs along the far east side of it and then along the north side of it, all the way over to eighty-nine. But there's thirty-two acres there that we have an annexed. We got a little strip, if you look at the annex, that Corporate Limits map that runs north, about straight north from the Adenoclate and then connects to the larger portions of the Olson property. This brings in that and makes the, all the real estate around the interchange annexed except for the mobile gas station and the motel. And then it, the third one is a parcel of about half an acre. And if you ever looked at it, you would be amazed. But it's on, you know where the mini warehouses are? Just to the east of the Plain Art Building, just to the west of the Dental Associate Building. There's some mini warehouses there that are in the town. And behind that is a half an acre that goes with the thirty-two acre parcel on the other side of the interstate. But because they're two separate pieces, we brought them in as two separate parcels. It's actually very hard to get to a, I don't know how you could use it without buying the mini warehouses. But at least there, we've got that all-annexed that control all that.
Now, that little parcel you were just talking about, that is a part of this ordinance?
Yes, it is. It's part of this ordinance.
I see from the language under Territory Annex that the actual annexation petition needs to be attached to this. And that would be helpful if we got it for the second reading because there would be a map that would come with it.
Yeah, that was, that was my comment, too. Could we have a map for the next meeting?
Then we could visualize it.
Well, that's what I was looking at here, was that it wasn't included. And so we'll take care of that the next time. I was getting ready to go to the map, but it wasn't there.
Yep, me, too.
We were a little squeezed last week with the training for EOC. So, Dan put in a valiant effort in trying to get that loan taken care of. And so all the other ones kind of fell to me and Heather.
No, and we missed you guys who come in. And you weren't there because you were busy doing the other things. And that was very important, too.
And I guess I misspoke on the first reading. I think we do read the whole thing. So maybe on the second reading, the whole thing could be read. We make up for it.
And by then, we'll have a map.
Yes.
So that'll make it easier for everybody to look at, too, if they're looking online, to find it. So I'm sorry it isn't there today. And second reading will be at the next meeting. Is there anything else that needs to be said at this point?
The legal descriptions weren't accepted by the state.
Were or weren't?
Weren't.
Weren't.
So we got a request in to have them provide legal descriptions that would be accepted by the state. As is the case with just about everything else related to construction at this point in time. It's gonna take some time to get that done. They're gonna be pretty close to the deadline because this is in a TID. This is, the proposal is to have this in a TID. So we want that annex to be able to be in the TID and have that done by October first, I think it is, because that's the deadline for the assessed valuation requirements.
Little time issue there. So, does the state understand that?
I'm gonna give you a little bit of...
What's this?
This is a map.
Wow. Which, is that north is up?
Yeah, north is the top of the...
Okay, gotcha.
So this is north. This is the, this is highway eighty-nine, Main Street, and this is ninety-four. And this is the ramp. And let's see here. That's Quick Trip. That's McDonald's. That's Summit. That's the old Plain Art Building. This is the mini warehouses I was talking about. So if you look on the north side here, there's a little parcel. That's part of it. And then this is the other thirty-two acre parcel.
So the interstate cut it in half, kind of, or cut it...
Cut the end of it off.
Yeah, that was real nice of them.
Yeah, and then the other parcel sits right there. There's a house in the woods there. And it's about a little over an acre and a half, I think. And it sets right in there. And that's being annexed, too.
But that's not contiguous with the other piece?
No.
No.
The Styles owns all the real estate around it. They own this one and this one and this one and then that one over there and the one on the north side. They owned all that. But when we first did TID number four, they annexed these two. If you remember correctly, they paid for the amendment to be able to bring it in after the original TID was started. But they didn't annex the other, the three parcels that we looked at tonight. So we're doing TID number seven. That's moving forward at the next Plan and Commission meeting. I mentioned that. That will include all three of these parcels along with the Olson tract and a couple other ones.
And Planning Commission is next week?
Yes.
Next Tuesday night?
We've already had our Joint Review Board, which was held on the fourteenth. And so next is Plan and Commission meeting. And then I think it goes to the council after that and then it goes to the Joint Review Board again.
Okay. Well, unless somebody has something else on item G, I'll move to number nine, recommendations for future agendas.
I'd like to have a discussion item, maybe for the September eighteenth meeting to and from now, on the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. I know the Parks Committee would like to come in and present to the council under advisement.
Are you looking at doing a new comprehensive outdoor? I know they're supposed to be done every five years. Are you looking at that or just...
That's what they wanna do, is kind of talk about it because it's gonna be coming due in 2020 again? And how we're addressing it?
On the first, on the first meeting in September, the budget should be in your hands for nineteen.
Does that affect his proposal for that?
Well, yeah, kind of. We'd have to look at and see how we fund it. Some of it can be done through the Planning and Development Fund. So it depends on how much it is. I know we did, the last time we did it that way. The time before that, we actually did it in the capital budget. So it's, it just depends on what we're looking at. I know we have a lot of planning and development activity that's been going on, but it just depends.
I think you're looking at a discussion item?
Yep, discussion item.
On the, of what's currently the plan. I think it's been a while since we've looked at that as a council. At least my memory.
It's been a long time, I think.
The last notes that I got from Misty were November third of 2015.
Yep, see, I was much younger then.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I know Dustin handled all that. And then Rob, he robbed it all. I didn't have much to do with that one.
So, and maybe, we might get, you know, once we look at that, maybe it'll be kind of blatantly obvious of what we want to do or, you know, maybe...
To incorporate?
Maybe it won't cost a lot to do it, maybe. I'm such an optimist, sorry, but...
It all costs a lot.
Yeah, I know. Oh, well. Okay, well, anybody else have any other items for future agendas? All right, seeing none, meeting is adjourned.